I'd like to call this regular council meeting of August 10th to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dillon, you want to do a whole call, please? Mr. Gerard. Mr. Devine. Mr. Pezza. He's on vacation. He sent me an email, I believe. Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Mr. Catroci.
Present.
Mr. DeDezuppi. Here. Okay. We have public participation. So Chief, anybody wants to speak? Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hi.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lawrence Stephen O'Connor. I live at 205 Mill Street, Apartment 1. I'm here to let the people know of Bristol Borough that I intend to build a raft and that I would like all paperwork showing the ownership of the parking lot behind the Lenox Building so I can determine if I'm allowed to fill that parking lot.
I'm missing everything you're saying. Can you speak a little louder, please?
I intend to fill the parking lot with permission from...
Build the parking lot?
Build the parking lot behind the Lenox Building.
Oh, okay.
With cars that will hopefully help whatever need there is in Bristol Borough for some money that I can... If I can generate money through my business, I want to do it. I want to help. That's why I'm here. I think that it's a great idea for us to have a drive-in movie theater. I have the movie theater, and it's beautiful. I'm building a raft to put it on the river. I do not intend to damage any property whatsoever, and I will clean up every single piece of trash. I will generate money for the borough, and I would like to sit down with the treasurer or whoever I have to, to make sure that it goes to the right place. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I own a raft?
For a movie scene to float in the river.
I don't know. That's it? That ends public participation. Okay. Sorry, Mrs. Cullen, what do you have?
I just would like to say that I'm very sorry to the Valpenny Tosti family. Joe Valpenny died this morning and very close to Frank and Jackie Facillo. And I want to say I'm sorry to the mother, to Jackie's mother Shirley, and, you know, to her two sisters and her brother. I just feel really bad for this family. It's one of the long-running families in Bristol. They've been married for many years. It's real sad. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Lauren. Dave?
Yes, thank you, Ralph. Concerning the digging of the streets here at Pine Street, Spring Street, we're putting the remains in. Is Apple at some time going to be paving those streets? Do you have a timetable on there?
Well, usually, in the past, what they did is as they finished the job, they let it settle, just like if you did a sewer line. And then they set up paving all at once. Now, either they'll pave 50% of the street, they'll pave the whole street, depending on what they're tearing up on each street.
Yeah. But my point was that I would encourage the people who are digging, if you need a new sewer line going to your house or a new water line, or you want to get rid of your oil tank and switch over to natural gas, now would be the time to do it. They put new streets in there. The borough's going to frown on you digging up a new street. So that's why I was wondering about timetable. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, if somebody has something, Dave, what they should do, if they're listening at home, contact the borough as soon as possible and say, "We intend to put gas in." And Pico will also notify us, saying, you know, they always can open a street, but they have to do an infrared patch.
Yeah, yeah, which costs a lot more.
Costs a lot.
So now's a good time, too. Yeah, okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Louis?
Only thing I'd like to thank, John Driscoll and George Waldron. And you can see our protective partitions here. It's a very nice job. It's a good idea that they came up with. And I think it's a good way to keep us socially distanced and safe. Thank you.
He's a very talented guy, Johnny. Yes, he is. Michael?
Yes, I'd like to just again give a shout-out to George and the Public Works for the tremendous job that they did in the cleanup. You know, I know that they were out there for hours. You know, there were some other things that came up with lights that people had asked us to check into, but they didn't skip a beat, and they went the extra mile as they always do. And I'd just like to personally thank them.
Thanks, Michael. Betty?
Just wanted to know...
Long time.
Just wanted to know, maybe somebody can look into seeing when the next shredder event, people are asking me, or when we're going to do the medical waste when they drop off the drugs again, if that's coming up anytime soon or when we might be doing that. And that's it.
I think we usually try to do a shred event sometime September, early October at the latest.
Yeah, whenever, if Mr. Dave, if you get that information, if you can just email it to me and let me know.
Joe?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. So I've been doing for the last couple of months, just giving you an update on the COVID-19. We are no longer meeting as municipalities in the whole Bucks County area. We had been meeting on Wednesdays with the county to review everything. As of today, at 2:00, confirmed cases were 6,765 cases in Bucks County, 5,693 recoveries, and 515 deaths. In Bristol, there was 89 active and 84 recovered COVID-19. On the fire department side, I met with all the chiefs on the 27th of July. We still do not have any CO alarms. We're working on a grant application for that. We still have the Red Cross smoke alarm and just need to contact Chief Slack and get on a schedule for having him put in. We're coming to pick one up. Let's see. Working on some pre-planned in some of our larger buildings in town, like Columbia Lighting. We're just about ready to finish up on that. It's a pretty extensive project. It was reported out. We're continuing to do training starting in September. Even though the virus is here, we still need to train in the fire department and the police department. Fire Department restructuring organization meetings. Chief Reeves reported on a meeting, and progress being made. There have been no meetings because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Chief Reeves will reach out to other members to set up a time for restarting those meetings. Under the police department, calls for service in July were 1,087. Year-to-date, 6,538 calls for service, an average per month of about 934. In 2019, we did a total of 13,000 calls, and the average came out to about a month of 1,090. So we're a little bit below last year's numbers. Also, to the police department, the officers are taking part in a Zoom viewing of meeting tonight of Walking While Black. This includes a community discussion. The chief and I have been working on a program along with a lot of other people in the county and looking at another program that will be able to expand into town with the school district, the teen foundation, the borough, police department, to move this project along. The officers are also taking a training program called "Dealing with Pressurized People." This is part of our ongoing training process, dealing with the issues of de-escalation. Our new police car is in service. Thank you again to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority, who provided the funding for this vehicle through the Conceda Grant Program. And the police department's wrapping up the Buckley Street stabbing investigation. The victim is in stable condition. Officers DiPaolo and Lepore responded in under three minutes. They forced their way through a six-foot stockade fence to stop the assault. Most likely, if they hadn't been able to get through that fence, the victim might not have survived. And I don't think I have anything else. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Dillon, do you have anything? Two quick things during the storm and all. We lost the electricity out at the intersection of Bath and 13, and the borough is responsible for that traffic signal. And I know Merrell Winslow spent about two and a half days keeping an eye on that emergency generator, make sure it had enough gas to keep it going. And also, that was well beyond the call of duty. So I want to thank Merrell for that. I also, the boroughs received inquiry about Bristol Day, about possibly having a car and boat parade through town, more or less to keep the spirit of Bristol Day Committee going and whatever. So I'd just like to know, council wants the chief and Merrell to meet with this committee to see if the details can be worked out for this event on October 17th. It would be late in the afternoon. They would ride through town. They wouldn't be stopping with the cars and boats and, you know... I personally would definitely like to see this take place. I think that Mark Gesewalde does a great job in organizing the event, and I think that it gives people something to do. And you're not gathering people together that could come out and look at, you know, the parade. I just think it's a good thing, but it's up to anybody who opposes it. We're all sure we could pull it off, right? I'm sure you could get it pulled off.
Yeah, it wouldn't be any different than what we did for the school. My only thing is if, you know, it's advertised early, that will end up being like a Christmas parade. You'll have everybody out in the trees and...
Well, we'll talk to Mark. But I would like to see it happen if we can. So if you and the chief can meet when, if you want me to be there, I'll be at the meeting. And the other two items are on the agenda. I don't know if council has any questions. One is a lot-line change, dealing with the county of Bucks. There was a county of Bucks official here. Mr. Salerno spoke with him and told him he didn't need to stay. Pretty simple lot-line change. It deals with where the ramp jug handle was, just signing off on that, changing the lot-line. And the other is proposed adoption of a resolution for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant to improve the waterfront in the amount of $2.5 million. So it's just an application. Any questions on Mr. Dillon's discussing with the lot-line change? Okay, Mr. Salerno, do you have anything?
I'd like to take a few minutes of everybody's time to discuss something that I feel is probably one of the best deals that I have ever negotiated in town. I made contact with Mary Gonti, who is the CEO of Black Bear Sports Group. Mr. Gonti is from Bethesda, Maryland, and he came in to tour our ice skating rink last week. I had Mike McVey give him a tour of the facility. So after the tour of the facility, I met with him and Jim after the tour, and we discussed the issues that are concerning with the rink. And we started like a little negotiation talk at that point. So they own... They're one of the biggest in the United States for ice. They own, I think, nine rinks or more with 25 sheets of ice. So after extensive negotiations and lots of back and forth, this deal fell apart numerous times. We put together a deal that I think, not think, I know, is probably the best deal for the taxpayers of this town and for this council. So we agreed in principle... Now, let me just explain that council is a recommending body to the authority. Okay? So we only can recommend to the authority to sell this facility. So we agreed in principle on a $4 million sale price. Four million. The agreement has no contingencies for anything. There's no financing contingency. There's no due diligence period. They're willing to close by the end of August. All the employees will be retained by this new Black Bear Sports Group. And they're anticipating the... They're taking the... They're accepting the property as is, which we know at the moment needs over $100,000 in two items that need to be repaired. In Rink A, we need a chiller tower that just went down right before they came out to visit the rink. Approximately cost $70,000. And we need a compressor, approximately $35,000. Those are the two things that we know we need immediately. So with that being said, I want to explain how this all took place. Okay? So the first thing I needed to do, once we agreed in principle on a sale price, I needed to go sit down with the Grundy Foundation because there's a deed restriction on the facility that only could be used for public recreation. Met with Mr. Williams, back and forth for several days. And even though this was a week and a half of negotiations, this had to happen quick. So Gene ended up talking to his board of directors, and on, I think it was Friday night or Saturday night, he called me and said they had a unanimous vote to sell the rink, to lift their restriction. Then tonight, because I had a confidentiality agreement, that I couldn't discuss this with anybody. So council's all hearing this for the first time tonight. The only two people I was allowed to discuss this with was our solicitor and our borough manager. So I met with the Grundy, the authority, tonight at 5:30, and they voted to sell the rink for $4 million. They agreed on all the contingencies. So what does this mean for the borough taxpayers? So let me break it down for you a little bit more so everybody understands. We're getting $4 million. We owe $3.7 million on the rink, which the final payment was due in 2025. So the borough taxpayers literally paid over $10 million so far for a facility that we don't even own, that we don't use. But anyway, we'll reduce the debt service by 8.5 mils. But that will do... Well, that will do is give everybody in 2021 a tax savings of 15%. It's actually 14.68% reduction. So it's, let's use round numbers, 15% reduction in borough taxes, which means in 2021, every borough taxpayer will see their tax bill reduced by 15%.
Oh, my goodness.
Also, for the first time in almost 40 years, the building will be put back on the tax roll, and the school district, the borough, and the county will receive taxes from now on in the future. So after the sale, we're going to have roughly about $250,000 because there's $300,000, we got transfer taxes, $25,000, some miscellaneous, just like if you sold your home. There's costs involved. So let's use, I'm using round numbers, $250,000. Now, I'm not saying we have to do things like this, but this is my recommendation to this council. And I want to keep the authority in place because the money will go to them, and we could have them, we could take that board over, abolish that board, and put the money in our account, which we could talk about later. But right now, I like to keep them active. So I like to immediately take $100,000 from the sale and invest that right into recreation. What I'd like to do is give the basketball courts a complete facelift. Redo the baseball fields that needed to be done this year. I also would like to replace the bridge over Adams Hollow Creek on the path because someone already fell through there. It's been blocked off. So we have the money for that. And I also like to redo the path where all the tree roots are growing through and fix all the areas on the path that needs attention. I would also like to meet with Mr. Chicalletti from the school board, since we now have a good working relationship. And maybe we could create something together because since we have some money to spend in recreation and they have a usable piece of land over there, maybe we could do something with them also to try to do something with recreation. So I'm trying to invest a lot of money into recreation. I also want to take a part of that and rip down Elm Street. Elm Street has to come down. You can't stay out there anymore. So that's my suggestions. I think that $4 million is a number that this council is very fortunate to have. It was a lot of time and effort went into this agreement. I think that the biggest part of this agreement, when it fell apart, it was on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night. It could have been 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. We're going back and forth. And he said, "The building's not worth $4 million." And, you know, my son said to me, which is involved in real estate, "Why don't we do the deal, why don't you do the deal at a certain part for the building and so much for the contents, the chillers, all the things that, and the businesses as a value?" So we went back and forth, and that's how we got to the $4 million evaluation. So I just think that this town has now got... This building's been an ice, not an ice store. It's been a white elephant for the taxpayers of this town for a long time. And I think that by selling this rink, it gives everybody a reduction in taxes. It helps everybody out. And our debt, I think our debt service is 8.8 mils, and we're paying off 8.5 mils. So we have like 3/10 of a mil left in debt service. So I think this council, under 19 years, I'm finishing up my 19th year, for what we have accomplished, the buildings that were renovated, the roads that were done, and everything that come out of this whole thing, owing 3 mils in debt service. Everybody does 0.3 mils. Everybody deserves a lot of credit. I'm very happy and proud to work with this group of people.
Ralph, I want to say something. I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done for this town with all of us involved. But I can't tell you how excited I am right now.
It's a big deal.
About this. And this has been a burden for the town for so long. Thank you, thank you.
Facility that nobody ever used.
Thank you.
And to no fault of anybody. I'm not going back saying, you know, it's just, it's a... Now hopefully... I'm putting on the agenda tonight to authorize Borough Council to recommend to the authority to sell the skating rink for $4 million. Yeah, you could give the resolutions out so they can look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
What it's going to read?
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on this?
It's going to be part of our... So there's only three things on the agenda?
And this is what we have to read?
This is the top part.
The top part, okay. Add it as number six? This is unbelievable. It's awesome.
All right, so number six on the agenda will be authorization. So if anybody wants to wait till the motion and we can comment? If anybody wants a comment, or you want to discuss it now?
I'm so shocked.
Dave, anybody have anything they want to...
No, good job, Ralph. Thank you.
Ralph, I think it's a great thing that's happening to the borough. And as much as I watched for 17 years, people complained about what a burden the skating rink was for the taxpayers. This is definitely going to break that out. Thank you.
So we'll put some projects together if there's anybody outside of the scope of what I talked about. I like to maybe have the manager and not spend a lot of money on looking at some stuff. I think the path is one issue that a lot of people walk and ride their bikes on, and there's a lot of tree roots that lifted up a lot of areas.
Yeah.
I think the basketball courts is a...
A definite.
Is something that we definitely need to redo. And I think that the baseball fields are something. And then we'll go from there in that order. You know, them three things is top priority.
Good, thank you. Beautiful. I really appreciate that, the basketball courts, because we've spent time on that basketball court trying to fix it up, and it was impossible. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I know you and Steve and Chuckie and Charlie.
Chuckie, Shirley, yes.
Louis?
I'd just like to say that the other nice part about this is here's a company from out of town, is in the skating business, and they see the value of this rink. So even though it's really been a, you know, milstone around our necks, I think this is going to turn out to be a real good investment for them also. So it's going to be good for the town. And they see the value in it. And they run these things, like you said, nine of these places. So they see the value in our rink and our town to make this kind of investment. So I think that's another very good thing to look forward to. Thank you. And thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. I think the big thing is a lot of people are going to save 15% too on their taxes.
Yes, that's amazing. It's amazing.
Okay, so that's going to end our first part of our work session. So we'll go right into our regular voting council meeting. Get my agenda. So Chief, do we have any public participation? Okay, that ends public participation. Joe, do you have anything?
No.
Number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for July 13, 2020, to accept the treasurer's report for June 2020, to accept the police and DJ's report for July 2020, to accept the fire chief's report for July 2020. accept the inspe, excuse me, inspection department report for July 2020, and to accept the public works department report for July 2020, and accept HARB for July 27, 2020.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the lot line change plan filed by the county of Bucks for parcel 04006-031, so long as the conditions set forth in the Borough Engineers Letter of July 7, 2020, and the Bucks County Planning Commission Letter of July 20, 2021 are met.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize adoption of a resolution for 2020 redevelopment assistance capital program grant application for the waterfront park improvements in the amount of $2.5 million.
One second.
Mr. President.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Five a second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a resolution recommending sale of the property, building, and equipment to Grundy Arena LLC for the purchase price of $4 million.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? Questions, no comments.
Very exciting. I mean, I can't tell you.
Mr. Dillon? Ralph, thank you. Mr. Salerno, thank you.
I can't say enough.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, don't let it go anywhere. So I just want everybody to understand one thing. Debt service money has to be reduced by taxes. So if you can't take that money and spend it on general fund or put it somewhere else, everybody understands we have to reduce taxes by 8.5 mils, which equivalent almost 15% taxes.
Yes.
And make one phone call before we adjourn.
Okay.
Not a good sign.
This is Marie. Please leave a message.
He's not there.
At the tone. Please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
Marie, I just want to let you know, you just bought an ice rink in Bristol Borough.
Oh, yes.
Give us a call. I make motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Dave, meeting adjourned.
Excellent.
Oh, what a meeting. Excellent. This is the way things should go all the time, just positive, all positive.